Order, please rise for the pledge. Cecily, roll call, please.
Counselor Gurley.
Here.
Counselor Richards. Counselor Sanchez. Counselor Thorstad.
Here.
Counselor Trask.
Here.
President Proton Mallor.
Here.
Mayor Coleman.
Present. The record show that there are six counselors present and one absent. All right, take it away. Whoever's in charge.
Well, I'll just introduce this topic. Thank you all for coming to this joint Planning Commission, City Council work session. Our friends from Winterbrook Planning will be leading the most of this, but just to give you kind of a background of where this started, we've been working with them since February or January on this. The housing production strategy was part of a state requirement that we now have to follow as we are now over 10,000 population. The idea behind the housing production strategy is to essentially find ways that the city can promote the development of housing of all types to meet the needs that have been identified in previous works like our housing needs analysis, which you may remember from 2022. And so I will go ahead and toss it over to them and we can get started.
Hello. Thank you all for being here today and for having us. I'm gonna have a switch ahead a couple slides. And this is just, that one is just showing the timeline for this project. And Blair sort of covered the basics here of where, how we've gotten to this work session. And something we'll talk about at the end of this is the next steps, which is coming back after we've incorporated some of the questions you have or comments and then bringing that to the city council for a hearing to consider adoption. Thank you. Next.
If I can interrupt real quick, Larissa, would you mind introducing yourselves so everybody knows who you are?
Absolutely. Yes, so I am Larissa Gladding. I am on the team of Winterbrook Planning. I have been working on this project alongside my teammate Greg Winterout, who has been working with some of you on this process. He is not able to be here today, but he does say hello. And I know he's looking forward to hearing what conversation happens today. And I've also got with me Jesse.
Jesse Winterout with Winterbrook Planning. Yeah, I'm happy to be here and covering for Greg today. It's great to meet you. And I've been through Sweet Home several times growing up in Oregon, but haven't had the pleasure of being in this room before. So thanks for having us.
So I am going to start us off by going through each of the strategies. And one thing that I think we all know about housing is that it's an issue that is very complicated and nuanced. So instead of suggesting just one strategy here with this process, we are suggesting a series. There are six of them. And this is so that we can tackle the most needed housing and the housing needs in Sweet Home from different angles and to address that as much as possible. And those housing needs in Sweet Home right now are notably a need for housing that can be affordable to residents. We have seen that a large proportion of the households here are have incomes that are falling into the low to extremely low category, which in itself is not an issue, but it is becoming an issue with the rising costs of housing for residents. And so a lot of times in Sweet Home, those residents are people 65 and older. They are people that are renters. They are single adults, especially single women with or without children. And then there's also a need for accessible housing. There's also a disproportionately large percentage of the population here that have at least one disability, and that's across all age groups. So having housing that people can actually use and meet their needs is very important. And that's going to be important across everybody's lifespan here. So those are the two focuses. The strategies all together are going to have an impact of reducing any obstacles to the production of this housing and then also creating some opportunities for those. You'll see that there are some implementing measures for each strategy. Instead of going through the details of each one for the sake of time and allowing some conversation, I'm going to give you an overview of each strategy, talk about its purpose and its background, a summary of those actions, and then talking about some of the greatest impacts the strategy can have. And then we'll give you five to 10 minutes for any of your questions and conversation that you might want to have amongst yourselves before we move on to the next one. You'll see on the slides, there's a thumbs up symbol next to two of the strategies. These are the strategies that garnered the greatest support from our Housing Roundtable members in feedback and from the interest parties that have reviewed the draft so far. So what we're going to do is go through these a little out of order from how they appear in the report. We're going to start with A and B because these are the ones that should be the lightest lift in terms of implementation because they're working off of policies and programs that are already exist and are very strong in Sweet Home. And then we'll look at D and E because those are the most popular. And we'll end on C and F because we anticipate maybe the most questions in conversation. So we'll end there. Next slide. Thank you. All right. So first strategy is Strategy A, and that is publicizing and clarifying the 2022 code updates around middle housing and low income housing. And if you jump to the next slide quick, in this context, when we're talking about middle housing, we're talking about housing types that are middle or medium density. So that is the in-between low-density housing types like single family on its own lot, as well as on the other side is high-density residential-like apartments. And examples of middle housing are townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, accessory dwelling units, which historically have been called granny flats. And these are typically types of housing that can be more affordable to produce and to live in. And we'll go back to the last slide. Thank you. And in the 2022 code update, the city really took an initiative to define these housing types in ways that are really important to encourage them and to establish where they can be allowed, which is important because there is a need for middle housing. And there's also a need for some middle, low-income housing. And these are types of housing that people want to build now and can be useful. But in a lot of cities, they're just not baked into the code. So the opportunities are already existing here in ways that they're not existing elsewhere. And so the strategy itself is getting the word out about this. We found that a lot of developers and even just homeowners aren't that aware of the opportunities that exist in Sweet Home that make it competitive. So getting the word out, providing some education, and then also making some clarifications to the language in that code that makes the interpretation of the code as easy as possible for people who want to build these housing types in the city. And then surveying housing developers, keeping this engagement process going after people go through the process and asking what worked, what didn't, and continuing to do that. And all of this combined is something that can increase the likelihood that middle housing and more affordable housing types are going to be developed in the city. And with that, I think we can have a little conversation, maybe about five minutes for this one, or anything you guys might want to talk about.
Is there specific language that will be provided regarding clarifying existing code provisions? Because it is something that people ask me about often, and we do have that within our code, but maybe they're not understanding it. So.
Right. There are suggestions in the report in terms of some particular places that we identified and that staff have noticed places.
I think it's excellent of Sweet Home to be in the place where we already, we just need to communicate what we've already done. So well done, staff. We're getting that going. And all council who had to listen to that code update. And Planning Commission for going through all of it.
Just one comment from the staff perspective is that we, once, we have seen an uptick in duplexes being built in the city. And for a long time, I was wondering why we didn't have very many people looking into townhomes. And just in the last week, we've had a couple of proposals that haven't had permit applications yet, but it's slowly getting there. People realizing that there is profit to be made there, but there's also good quality housing that can house a lot of people that's available.
So I have a question. As we get into this. So I'm on a national rural task force, and we have had conversations about housing in rural America and the fact that we have a large population of elderly people living in large family homes by themselves. And they're, because these homes were purchased when things were much cheaper and they're paid for now, they're not transitioning into housing that's possibly easier for them to maintain and get around in. Is that going to be addressed in this? And how to make it affordable? And even the little granny flat type apartments, the small homes where they can actually access them with wider doorways, shower stalls with seats in them rather than bathtubs, the things that make life more comfortable, but at the same time, the aesthetics that would make it more, make them feel better about that transition. And that in itself would open up more homes. And in Sweet Home, that is definitely an issue. And so I just, are we, is that something you've taken into consideration?
I think you'd be pleasantly surprised by the next few slides that we have.
Okay. And then the next thing was recently, before the council came forward, someone was wanting to build a granny flat. And the cost of being able to access that flat with the sewer and water lines was cost prohibitive. And I think that's a serious issue that we probably need to address, considering the square footage on that would not accommodate a lot of people. But having worked at the school district, and I see multiple families living in homes that weren't designed for that many families. And that is a problem for low-income families. They're really struggling. So I think we need to make the granny flats more affordable and their access to public services affordable.
And a quick question, too. I know I've seen an uptick in duplexes, but how about tiny homes? Where's that fallen in the equation?
To quickly just affirm that, that your point, Counselor Gurley, is very valid and something we're hearing a lot about and is reflected in some of the future strategies. So we're looking forward to getting maybe some of your feedback on those as well. And question about tiny homes is definitely something that has come up a lot in this process. One of the elements of this strategy around clarifying existing code provisions is clarifying some of the definitions of different housing types. And that includes defining what tiny home means and differentiating that from other housing types that are defined like prefabricated housing, manufactured, mobile homes, to hopefully make it easier to establish tiny homes that still can meet the relevant building codes or development standards, and of course, are following appropriate density regulations. All right. I think we can move on to B. So Strategy B is another one that's working from an existing program. And this is increasing participation in the Housing Rehabilitation Partnership Program. This is a program that Sweet Home has been participating in, and it comes out of Lynn County. And the county is using community development block group funds. And what they do is they're providing minor, low-interest loans for housing rehabilitation projects to low-income homeowners. And when the city participates in that, it's benefiting about five households a year. So it's something that has already been really beneficial. And something that you had brought up is the issue of aging housing stock. And from what we've seen, over a third of the housing stock in Sweet Home was built prior to 1960. So we know that a lot of your housing is getting older and is in need of some work. But we also know that the housing, the costs associated with maintenance and housing rehabilitation can be so much that it's prohibitive. And this is especially a concern for people that are earning a low to extremely low income. So this strategy is something that we can build off of and say, it's already working. How do we try and get more people to benefit? In this case, we are talking about having the city act as an advocate, going to the county and asking to try and increase the amount of funding going into this, perhaps the city contributing some funding to the program, and then communicating on behalf of people that have participated, what works, what could be made better? How does the application process become more accessible? And then the city encouraging more of your households to participate when they do get funding. And we would like to see that increased from five up to 10 households per year. And the impacts of this are pretty substantial. It's recognizing the fact that when you're talking about housing production and meeting housing needs, it's not just about producing new housing. It's about maintaining the housing that already exists. And because a lot of people have invested their wealth into the houses that they own, this is something that needs to be maintained for that purpose and also to prevent people having to be displaced if housing gets rundown. Anything else?
And this, this strategy just builds on that and tries to, I'd say, double the number of houses that can be rehabilitated each year.
So we can jump into any clarifying questions or conversation?
I've always appreciated the program and have recommended it to community members who have reached out to me for needs. So I'm glad to hear that this is one of the strategies to try and double that program.
Particularly since it's a long-term program. That's nice for continuity. I and my grandmother made use of this program about 40, 45 years ago. So it has some longevity and some credibility to it. I don't know. I do not know. I did not remember.
Yeah, the city works with Dev Northwest to, Dev Northwest is a local nonprofit that administers it. And the city takes turns with several other local cities to be the fiduciary for it. It's not our turn this year, but we took a turn a couple of years ago. But Dev Northwest is, is the organization that takes in applications and advertises it. And we try to support them as much as we can and include their advertising in our own materials. But it's always a challenge finding the best way to get to people because not everybody reads the newspaper, not everybody's on social media. So we're always looking for, for opportunities to, to reach people and continue to refine that. So if there are suggestions or, or ways that you think will, will help with that, we, we definitely want to include that in the future.
Are these grants or low-interest loans?
My understanding is they're low-interest loans.
I don't know if this is appropriate time to suggest it, but could the code enforcer, I'm sorry, he's got a new name now, a new title, could he be watching out for potential homes that are in need?
Oh, most certainly. Yeah, there's no, there's no lack of potential homes that are, that are, that could benefit from this program. And we can make materials available to him as well.
I can answer probably the one question. When it came through Sweet Home, it was actually done through direct mail. They actually sent letters out to homes promoting the program. Just to answer the question that was brought up.
Right. Yeah, that, that's a great idea. That's good to know that that's the background there. And if you have ideas like those or contexts that you don't think about today, please feel free to reach out to Blair or to us via email so that we can incorporate these as more information in the report.
So I find that a lot of our elderly people don't know how to navigate things. And then there's always that disappointment factor. They get their hopes up and then they don't quite meet criteria or something, and they get frustrated. Is there an advocate or somebody that can help them navigate this to find out if they would qualify, what that would be, and how to get from point A to B to C to make this work?
That's mostly been handled by Dev Northwest in the past. We certainly could have staff available to, to, that would have materials and help guide people through that. The unfortunate thing is that it is a very competitive program since funding is so limited. And that's really where that disappointment comes from, is that there's, there are major restrictions on who can be eligible and how much is available. Hopefully with adding, if we can succeed in getting more funding added, we can at least decrease some of that disappointment. But that's something we, we would probably want to look into is, is having a staff member be more available and more knowledgeable about the program so that they could guide people through that. That's primarily taken care of by Dev Northwest at this point.
I would add, another option could be Adult Family Protective Services. They're involved with elderly quite a bit. And that could be another option, that if they had that information, they could push that out.
I think working with the senior center would also be an ideal partnership on that.
So perhaps some of that is on the front end when creating materials about the program that are clear and really try and lay out who is eligible, how does this work, what do you need to have in terms of materials for verification? That's something that we could make on the front end as accessible as possible so that when those materials are in front of whoever is doing the communicating, it's immediately as clear as it possibly can be. All right. Are we good to move on to the next one? Okay. So we are jumping now to Strategy D. And this is one of those strategies that had the most support from all of the different parties that have done the review process. And this involves creating middle housing prototypes and encouraging local production. And this is not only another way that the city can work on creating opportunities for middle housing types, but it is also a way of pairing the city's history of forest products creation, as well as with the rising industry of mass timber. And if we jump ahead one slide, so when we're talking about mass timber, we're talking about an engineered wood product that is a newer industry. It's sort of stands away from traditional timber and lumber because it is engineered differently. It is supposed to be more cost-effective and more sturdy, more durable. And for this reason, it is becoming increasingly popular in being used for housing production. And one of the ways that that's working is in terms of creating modular homes. So homes that are created in segments in a manufacturing site and then taken to a property and constructed on the building site. If we go back one, thank you. So what, one of the major elements that this program or this strategy is looking at first is the city pairing with a middle housing designer or architect and creating from scratch middle housing prototypes, so sample plans and the specifications that can automatically meet the city's development code and building code. And then making those plans available to the public. And what this does is it creates something that people can access readily and can cut down some of those design costs for applicants, for developers, very significantly in that they're not paying someone to design the home, but also in that they can predict the approval process because that has been planned ahead. And they can predict the fees that will come along with it. So that is a really exciting opportunity and something the city can do. Pair that with encouraging some support for creating a local industry of modular housing production in Sweet Home. And pairing that with mass timber production is a great opportunity because you're working from an existing skill base and knowledge base of forest products. And you have a very strong economic development program here. And this is something that could create local expertise, create local jobs, and also potentially provide housing directly to the community while setting Sweet Home up as a case study or an example of someone who has invested in creating the needed housing types and then making it provided directly. And another really interesting opportunity here is promoting universal design concepts. And if we jump ahead two slides, thank you. This is something, when it comes to housing, that has to do with designing the housing to be accessible to all users and having that be part of the process as much as possible. And this can look like having no step entry into a home, having it be one level, widening doorway, some of the things that we talked about. And what this does is it is making the housing stock that you have here more accessible to the many people that have disabilities, as well as people that want to be able to age in place or stay in their homes as they go through different stages of life. And this is something that can be promoted in the designing of the prototypes, as well as in the city's working with companies to establish a modular housing, mass timber industry here. And if we go back two slides, thank you. This is something that is definitely ambitious. It's something that would take a lot of creativity, a lot of support, but it's also something that is a fantastic opportunity. And I think the city, there's a number of ways the city can achieve something like this. And that includes attracting an industry, attracting an existing manufacturer or an existing, or an existing manufacturer that would expand into Sweet Home, or someone who's already doing production that would get into modular housing, and then identifying sites, creating incentives for production in Sweet Home, but then also acting as, again, the advocate for prioritizing middle housing and prioritizing universal design in those.
Yeah, this, this is one of the more exciting things that, that I've seen in this project. And when I heard this came out of the, the roundtable process and, you know, dovetailing with economic development, using our existing industry and our, our history of wood products here. I, I grew up in a town that had five mills when I was growing up and has no mills now. So being able to, to see this happen here would be pretty, pretty cool. So looking forward to it.
We can take any questions or comments about this one?
Just to add a staff perspective, this one's really exciting, the idea of being able to hand across the counter a stack of plans to someone who wants to put in their ADU or granny flat in their backyard or.
to someone who wants to put in their ADU or granny flat in their backyard or someone who wants to build a cottage cluster or who knows, any kind of of, of housing like this, to be able to hand them a packet of materials where it's everything they need when it comes to the plans and it's already got the building official stamp on it that this is good to go if you build it exactly this way. Not only that, but we can tell people exactly what it'll cost. It'll cost, these are what all of your fees are going to be because we already know what you're going to build. And we could probably even put together some information on what materials cost should be roughly. And I know as a, as a homeowner or as someone who might be thinking about building something, it's so difficult to know what things are going to cost. And it's so difficult, especially when you're hiring a contractor, wondering, am I being swindled? Is this a good deal? This, is this reliable? What? Oh, oh, yep, you're stepping on it.
I won't touch it.
All right. Anyway, I, I would just love to be able to do that and it'll take, it'll take some investment and it'll take some partnerships because this, you know, having an architect design everything that we would want, I don't imagine that we'd be able to get that done for free. There'd be some expense involved. I'm, I'm hoping that maybe we can find a partnership with a local university that might have an architecture program that would be interested in taking something like this on. And then also working with DLCD to see what kind of support we can get from the state because I don't know of any other city that's even contemplating something like this. So and we can certainly share with others the resulting product if it means that somebody else foots the bill. So yeah, love to work on something like this.
I love this idea when we spoke about it yesterday, Blair. I think if we could pull this off, it would be an amazing thing for our community. Like you said, you just hand them the plans and people, if we have a variety to, made available to them, that would fit the need of what the housing needs are in our community. I think it's a great idea. I love it.
Well, it reminds me of the housing that we just got for our low income, our homeless families. And how exciting it was to see a price on that, that people who invest in homes for rent could look at that and just have something brought in. And yet they were nice looking. They were very nice looking. And I, I thought at the time that there were probably people interested in being able to access something like that because they generally don't know the cost. They don't know what it's actually going to look like and they don't have anybody to work with to make that happen. And if we have several choices or a startup company here that wants to do that, that would be awesome.
And I know that we have counselors on, on our council who have connections with some of those companies in town that might, yeah, we might be able to form those partnerships with.
That, that'll be critically important, especially the, the mass timber and the local industry part because that's, that's going to be relationship based. That's going to take a lot of, of building and probably take a good amount of time.
And something that Blair mentioned in terms of DLCD that I forgot to mention is just that the state is very invested in both exploring mass timber and exploring modular housing and the combination of the two. And so the likelihood that they are available to help work through the planning process and possibly identify some funding sources is a pretty good chance.
Some of those mass timber is done by Ferris Lumber, right? It's a cool facility.
All right. Shall we move on? Great. So again, this is one of the other strategies that had some of the greatest support. And this is around medium and high density updates to the comprehensive plan and the zoning code. And what these are achieving through all seven of these is easing some of the existing land use restrictions that are limiting the market's ability to create some housing that's more affordable to residents. So one of the ways that this is achieved through this strategy is by aligning the zoning map with the comprehensive plan map. There are areas of the city that have already been planned to become middle housing or high density housing areas. But for the zoning map right now, those types are not yet permitted. And so with an update to the zoning map, this establishes that there is an opportunity should there be market interest in those zones. And it aligns with what's already been set in the comprehensive plan. There are also a handful of actions here that are getting into some of the specifics. And so we'll go over them pretty briefly, but the first one is looking at the medium density zone and identifying that triplexes and fourplexes have some unnecessary density regulations that are different from the density standards when it comes to row homes. And just aligning those to have the same density standards, it's not increasing the density, but it makes it more consistent. Then there is allowing single room occupancy or dormitory style housing, which is not currently allowed anywhere in the commercial zone and the high density residential zone. And this is a housing type that is going to be the most affordable market rate multifamily housing type available. And particularly for the low income, single adults in Sweet Home, this is a viable option for affordable housing and it's locating it in some appropriate zones that already have dense housing or the resources of a commercial area. And then there is senior housing and assisted living facilities. And simply allowing them where they're currently not permitted outright. And that is the high density zone, the mixed use zone and the commercial zone. So just creating more opportunities for assisted living communities or facilities, which in turn, if people are going to take care or take care of that, take that as an opportunity that could free up some of the existing housing that we are talking about, that's no longer meeting the needs of people that could live in a more accessible housing option. And then finally, there is again, removing some unnecessary regulation on middle housing in the high density zone that currently restricts middle housing going through the plan development process. Which is unnecessary because it is already in the middle house or the high density housing zone. And all of these are working together again to limit some of those existing restrictions and have things aligned with the plans that you all have already adopted. Any questions on this one?
We end up with a lot of matters that come before us regarding rezoning, having our, our zoning match the comprehensive plan that comes to us frequently and sometimes there's a benefit to that because then people are aware of what's coming to their neighborhood. There has been a lot of push resistance to those rezoning measures, but it does bring a general awareness of what's being brought into their, their neighborhoods. So I don't know, I'm interested to hear what the council has to say regarding rezoning, all of that to match upfront.
The rezoning, I'm, I have no problem with. I would be cautious though because of the advice of outlets when people are trying to go to work in the mornings, road width. I think there's things we could do. We need to retain the ability to grow in a healthy way as a community. And sometimes people in larger metropolitan areas build closer to each other. And in a rural setting, those houses aren't going to sell as readily as one with a little more space between them. Or they have the ability to get out of that neighborhood and go to work without having to drive clear the end and not having the ability to round appropriately. And I think some of our rules that are in place are there to help us as we grow, that we grow in a, in an attractive way that does bring people to our community for the right reasons. And I think we need to be cautious when we peel back rules and regulations. Because sometimes we're shooting ourselves in the foot. We're creating neighborhoods that in 20 years are, are not going to be desirable. And people aren't going to live in them. And then we have another problem. So.
I had to piggyback on what Councilor was talking about, you're talking about like a transportation plan. Yeah. And I think that was one of the biggest hiccups of that one developer that came to council regarding Long Street recently. And I think that is very important that we have to address that very thoroughly because, and I know it's I'm picking on Lebanon, but I think, I see a lot of problems in Lebanon because I don't think they had the foresight of a lot of their transportation plans. I think you're going to get a lot of congestion, a lot of problems if you're not careful with, and how you develop. So transportation plans, I think it's going to be huge to pay attention to.
When is that getting rocked up again?
Quite soon, actually. We have a, I think in the next month and a half, there should be another Public Advisory Committee meeting for that. And then we're hoping that January, February, that's brought to you for adoption.
Yes, because we, we want to grow well, but we do know we have some roads that are needing to be expanded for growth.
I think one thing to keep in mind is that the, the plan, the transportation plan will outline, you know, the street widths and things like that, but it doesn't necessarily put anything in the ground. And so the, the purpose, the, one of the big helps that the plan gives us is it gives us the teeth to, when a, a development is proposed, that they might need to upgrade certain things because of the impact that they will have on traffic. The good thing about our current comprehensive plan is that most of the higher density housing that we're talking about is located on those, those arterial corridors on Main Street, on Long Street. And while Long Street may need some upgrades in the future, it does have the, the width necessary to accommodate all of that. And so it's mainly finding the funding for those street improvements, whether that be the developer or the city partnering with the developer or some combination. The, making sure that we can get those put in place at the same time.
And just to make you aware, the tentative TSP work session with Planning Commission and City Council is Tuesday, November 12th. Thank you, Angel.
So as I go out and about, I do see neighborhoods that are newer and our elderly are moving into them and they're happy, but at the same time, they're not neighborhoods that you would want to walk your children and your dog down the street because they're kind of homely. And then I'll go to other older communities around the state and there's aged trees and landscape and the, they've created that green space that there was some conversation in this about pulling back on that keeps the neighborhood cooler for our elderly people and makes them, on our families and they want to be out on the porches and in their yards and in their community. And I think we need, because we live in this lovely environment, we need to be careful and make sure that we invest in that because there is a difference between communities that just signage on the local 7-Eleven makes a difference. It tells you whether the community's prospering or not. And so there's other indicators and we need to be careful about that. I have no problem with multiple dwellings in a single setting or apartments. If they're done smart, they can be amazing and draw people to them, but we do need to be careful that we have that balance.
That's a great point. And I think that is something that we'll emphasize in the report as a responsibility of the city to still maintain the quality of the developments that would still create an opportunity for them in some other areas where they might really flourish, but not sacrificing the standards for livability and everything with those along the way. Moving on. All right. Thank you. So this is strategy C. We're jumping back. This is the first of the last two strategies. And this is again, one that's just a little more technical and complicated. So we'll have a little extra time for conversation, but this is affirming the fair housing commitment for the city. And this is recognizing the city's historic and ongoing efforts to ensure that housing can be accessed and people have a fair chance at being able to get housing in the city. And there are a couple ways to be able to do this. And the first two actions, these are lighter lifts. They involve adopting a comprehensive plan policy that acknowledges the city's 2014 resolution around fair housing and it involves promoting other government entities' resources and different maybe funding sources that they have available. And then there is an action that involves prioritizing some of the lowest income neighborhoods when it comes to planning capital improvement programming. So the infrastructure projects that the city decides to fund and plan for in that decision-making process, saying what neighborhoods have the lowest incomes that could use this investment? And very importantly, part of what came out of this research is there seems to be a relationship in the city between where public improvements are located and where the maybe higher income, more affluent neighborhoods are. And some of that is due to how annexation has happened and some of that is because maybe more expensive developments have higher budgets to put towards these public improvements. So this is a recognition that the city could make and a commitment the city could make to establishing having public improvements all around the city and also helping to maybe increase some of the property values and maybe future development in these neighborhoods as well. And then the next ones are recognizing the impact that land costs can have on the ability for housing to develop, especially in Sweet Home. And recognizing that with affordable housing developments, land costs can be a significant barrier. And if the city makes some investments or tries different strategies to take on some of those costs, that affordable housing developments wouldn't have to sacrifice any quality when it comes to being able to save some of those costs. Examples of how this can be done include land banking, which is when the city purchases land or uses land it already owns and reserves it for affordable housing developments. And then there is coordinating with faith-based institutions. This is again, something that already exists in your code. It allows land owned by faith-based institutions to develop affordable housing on their land. So there's a great opportunity here, given the amount of faith-based institutions, the land they own now or land they could possibly purchase for that use. And then also partnering with a community land trust, which is a nonprofit corporation that forms and purchases land, reserves it for affordable housing. And once that is developed, that nonprofit corporation manages the housing development. And then finally, there is something that doesn't currently exist around creating restrictions or requiring covenants in the, or requirements in the covenants for these affordable housing projects that requires them to stay affordable and meet those requirements for the longer term. And all of this has to do with keeping land and ensuring that amidst the market rate housing development over the next 20 years, that there is land that the city commits to making available for affordable housing. And in Sweet Home, that affordable housing, subsidized housing is really some of the is really some of the only housing that your low and extremely low income residents can afford. So it is a very big opportunity and something that is happening in Sweet Home that other cities like Lebanon don't have is your supply of buildable land. A lot of other cities are simply pretty fully developed. And there are opportunities here between land baking, community land trusts, and partnering with the faith-based institutions that could really do something with that opportunity. And then one of the other impacts or opportunities here is being able to partner with other government entities and organizations and being able to use their connections. They already have their resources and some of their funding sources. Any questions, thoughts?
Yes, just a couple. The Community Land Trust, is that like Habitat for Humanity? The reason I ask that is 25 years ago, they used to build in Sweet Home about two houses a year. We only have six right now. And then they stopped. And when I have asked them every once in a while over the years, why? They said, well, number one was the lack of volunteers to program it in Sweet Home. And number two was the cost that they have to pay for a property. And oftentimes, they would, they would go for the marginal more difficult because they're cheaper properties to build on. But that was a good opportunity for people of lower moderate income to work their way into homeownership of whatever size, didn't matter. And I just wondered if that is similar to that or if you'd want to address it or add as an option? I mean, Lebanon has a pretty decent Habitat for Humanity operation going on. I've always been puzzled as to why Sweet Home doesn't. But I, just like everywhere else, it's probably land costs. It's not free, somebody's going to pay for it one way or the other. So I don't know. Could you address or add something with that?
Yeah. Maybe Blair can talk more about the longer-term relationship or future possibilities. But we were very fortunate in the Housing Roundtable to have a representative from Habitat in the room and as a part of the conversation. And so she was able to provide a lot of context. She suggested the Community Land Trust model and indicated that there is interest in Sweet Home in being able to work here and at least in being able to potentially help implement some of these strategies and figure out how to make them successful.
The only thing I can add is that, yeah, that conversations, we had conversations with them and there was a property that they had an interest in. I'm not sure if the sale of that property went through where they were looking at doing some building and having some land kind of set aside for future building. So that's kind of ongoing, yeah.
Any other thoughts?
Well, the land banking is a good concept. It's a lot of times how the citizens view that, you know. But when you have a community, and I'll pick on Lebanon because I see Lebanon growing. Every little orifice in that town has got an apartment now. Which is concerning, again, back to the transportation side of it. There's so much congestion, I don't know how you even get out on the roads anymore in Lebanon. But the thing of it is, is if there's a lot of developers, a lot of individuals, and for example, in Lebanon, they see the growth so strong right now, they, they are selling the property or it doubled the price of what it's worth. So I see some advantages to land banking so you can get affordable housing on it. But again, it's how it's communicated to the public as to what that ultimate goal is. Because they view it sometimes differently. So food for thought.
Absolutely. That's something that I think we talk a bit about in the report as a challenge or something that has to be addressed, especially in terms of educating the public on what affordability means and what that process would look like. But it is something that would again, need to be done responsibly. And I think part of the reason why we've ended up with the strategies that we have is that they, they work well together, they're well-rounded. And the reason why maybe none of the strategies talk about reducing the requirements for public improvements for affordable housing is because we want them to be able to balance, you know, and say, you know, we're increasing development in some areas, we're increasing density, but there's still needs to meet the requirements around transportation and accessibility. But that's a really good point.
By the way, that report that you guys created was very thorough and very informative. I was surprised by some of the data points that I saw in there. The huge increase in the median home price in Sweet Home in the last five years. What was that, 20% or something? That was incredible. But also to see that 27% of our population is disabled in some ways, that's a significant portion. Thank you for the work you've put into that, that's telling for our community.
Thank you. All right, on to the last one. So this is Strategy F. And it involves modifying these system development charges in terms of the fee schedules and exemptions. And if we skip to the next slide real quick, we're talking about system development charges. These are the fees that are charged to the developers that are contributing to the public improvement projects. They go to different sources in Sweet Home, that's water, wastewater, transportation, stormwater and parks. And the way that they're charged for residential development in Sweet Home right now is being charged by the number of units proposed. And what we are proposing in this, one of these actions, is altering that for residential and having it be charged based on the square footage of the housing rather than the number of units. And the way that you can look at this is in the current fee schedule, based on number of units, a 3,000 square foot, single-family home would be charged the same SDCs as a 900 square foot townhome. And when we're talking about encouraging some of these middle housing types, this is something that would significantly decrease those costs for people that want to create that housing type. Especially because middle housing has this smaller impact. It's a way that we can encourage it. And this strategy really focuses on incentivizing smaller developers. And so people that are wanting to build an ADU in their backyard, but maybe that SDC cost is going to inhibit it. Reducing that so it's more conducive to the size of the project is something that would have a really great impact. And places like Albany have implemented this and seen success. So that is something that's very possible. If we go back one slide quick, thank you. The other is exempting small ADUs or conversions of single-family dwellings into duplexes. And again, this is just another way to look at some housing types that the city could really use right now and housing types that aren't happening and incentivizing it and reducing those upfront costs. And then finally, something, one of the great ideas that came out of the Housing Roundtable was the idea of phasing those SDC payments. So instead of what's happening now, which is requiring those payments upon the building permit, this would be requiring them upon occupation of the unit. And whether that applies for more than these middle housing types developments or just these ones is something that could be discussed. But that is something that will again, reduce those upfront housing costs and allow developers to get that financing a little down the road and budget a little more effectively for the housing types. Any questions? Any thoughts?
When I used to work for the city as a day job, more often than one would expect, applicants, homeowners, builders would come to the table after applying for permits and then find out about the SDCs of whatever dollar value they are that year. And they'd say that, oh, my bank isn't going to finance that extra thousands of dollars. Because they didn't know ahead of time, they didn't plan for it. And I, I could definitely see a value of smaller units, like ADUs, paying less. Except, except that oftentimes you can still get a fair number of people in there. Reading through the report in the last couple of days, I noticed a trend towards the end that there was an accommodation of modifying or restricting rather than cutting out for certain small-size developments, the SDCs. After working here for a very long time and back in the day when there was only two SDCs and they were very low for quite a few years, and we're just recently having five of the normal ones, I would hate to cut down the opportunity for new residents to be able to pay their fair share or at least a modified share of the capacity needed. And, you know, water, sewers, streets, parks, et cetera. That's just my take on it. But I'm not, I know it's been a long discussion and I'm late to the party on this and you guys have already covered it. But just from my own point of view, I would look at restricted percentages versus cutting out entirely for the smaller developments. Whether it's a garage ADU or otherwise, I really never have liked the idea that an ADU or an extra facility had to have a separate connection to the city system. Regardless of the SDCs, that's a lot of extra cost. And there's been a number where the cost of connection is significant because it's just not tying into the existing house plumbing. It's across the yard and out in the street and excavations and paving and blah, blah, blah.
This is, this is an issue that we talked about last spring.
I'm sure.
With, there was a gentleman that came to the council, was seeking to put in an ADU. And even if we didn't have any SDCs owed, there is still just the cost of connecting to the city system. Because what our engineering standards say is that each unit has to have its own direct connection to the main. And so if you put in a new unit behind your house, you have to have that trench from your backyard all the way to the street to where the mains are to have their own separate connection and their own separate water meter for that house. And that, in certain circumstances, that can be a really high cost. So certainly a look at our engineering standards to see whether that, those separate services are necessary is warranted. The caution, though, that we have is anytime somebody puts in a unit, if they don't put in their own meter, then we have no way of knowing what that unit is, is using when it comes to water and wastewater. And so if somebody is planning to have a family member live in that all the time, no problem. But if someday they want to lease that out to someone and they're expecting that person to pay their fair share of utilities, well, there's no way to know. Because you didn't build to have a water meter installed in the first place. So we need to caution people to try to be as forward-thinking to all those scenarios as possible to make sure that they're ready for that eventuality.
Well, I remember the conversation was that, well, you don't know how many people you're going to throw out there. Well, the fact is, if the footprint's only 200 square foot, there's only so many people you can put out there. But in the main house, there's unlimited number of people you can put in there. And you can still put in a breezeway and still be part of the house. But the fact is, with, under the spirit of the law, trying to have an ADU on your property, if we make it too cost prohibitive, I think there's a litigation issue with that. I think we can set ourselves up for trouble if there's not a balance on that. But I also don't think that if it is an addition, it's literally a bedroom off the house, that they really need to have a separate meter and everything. But I don't believe they should be able to build and add to that without putting a meter in and connecting to the public.
Sure, I appreciate your input on that. Because I think that the percentage idea is an idea worth exploring.
And something that we've sort of discussed, but yeah, thank you for bringing this up, is especially around exempting the small ADUs and the conversions, is the idea that these could be more of a short-range strategy, addressing the fact that the housing types are not being built very much in Sweet Home right now. And so they're being incentivized right now. But if it really gets an uptick in the amount of ADUs that are being applied for or conversions, then the fee schedule might shift. And that's kind of applied to a lot of these strategies, too, is these are the housing needs right now and the anticipated housing needs. But, you know, the different incentives for different housing types might change over the years. But this is, I think, what's applicable right now. All right. Well, we certainly can have another larger discussion if anyone wants to talk about the larger report. I'll give a quick overview of the next steps and then open that up. So again, we're going to take your questions and your comments and incorporate them into the report, incorporate them into the strategies, and then finalize that document. And your next City Council hearing on November 12th is when we will, the staff will bring that final draft to you, let you know what has changed. And you will have an option to adopt that final report into the comprehensive plan. And we've got our contact information up here. Again, feel free to reach out to Blair, Angela, or myself, Greg, or Jesse, he's here, if you have any questions or any thoughts that come up. And we'll be finalizing that over, you know, the coming weeks. So we definitely encourage your feedback. Thank you very much for being here today and for listening to all of this. And if you have anything else you want to talk about with this, let us know.
Anything else of council? Thank you so much for coming and we look forward to seeing the next report and seeing you on November 12th. All right, I'll close this meeting out at 6:10.